Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great Constitution, for which we stand, one nation, under God, in the legal and liberty of justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Breyer?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Bonnie. First item on the agenda is a proclamation for a very special gentleman, so I'm going to ask our city attorney to come up and participate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Zeneta Fontes and I are jointly reading the proclamation, which is a little different from the normal procedure because Judge Sheldon was the mentor to both of us.
Aww.
So, we're going to alternate on the proclamation, but let's say I'll go first.
Whereas Gerard M. Sheldon served as Renton City Attorney for 27 years, having served five mayors and 11 city councils.
And whereas during his tenure as Renton City Attorney, Gerard M. Sheldon negotiated with BNSF, Boeing, and the Monahan family for the acquisition of the first 20 acres of land that we enjoy today as Jean Coolan Memorial Beach Park, and...
Whereas Gerard M. Sheldon was appointed to the King County Superior Court in 1977 by Governor Dixie Lee Ray, and was twice elected by his fellow judges as the presiding judge of the King County Superior Court, and...
Whereas during his tenure on the King County Superior Court, Judge Sheldon founded the Family Law Department in King County Superior Court to relieve court congestion, negotiated with the county council to obtain five new judicial positions, and negotiated for the construction of five new courtrooms for those new judicial positions, and...
Whereas, while serving the citizens of King County, Judge Sheldon earned numerous awards, including the Louis Brandeis Award, the Outstanding Judge Award, and the Washington Jurist Award, and...
Whereas Judge Sheldon left the King County Superior Court and joined the Judicial Arbitration and Mediation Services in 1989, and has distinguished himself as a mediator and arbitrator, having received awards for excellence in dispute resolution and a distinguished service award, and...
Whereas, although retired, Judge Sheldon still serves the citizens of King County by conducting arbitrations and mediations pro bono.
And we should mention there's many other things that could be written, but we're limited in space on a proclamation, so...
And therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim July 14th, 2014, to be Judge Gerard M. Sheldon Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join in this special observance.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person? I move the proclamation be approved as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council approve the proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Well, Judge Sheldon, it's my pleasure to be able to present you with this proclamation. I also have another special gift that's been reserved for very few people since I've been mayor over the last six and a half years, and this is a key to the city. And it reads, "City of Renton Key to the City Presented to Judge Gerard M. Sheldon for your devoted years of service to the city." I need to tell you, I had to wrestle with this for a while because giving you a key to the city made me very nervous, but since we've gone to electronic card keys, it's not really a problem. (laughter) Yeah.
Happens what in April?
Yeah, I think that was last time.
(laughter)
Mr. Mayor, members of the Renton City Council, I'm much humbled to appear before you here and presenting me with this award. Before I go any further, I'd like to, with your permission, introduce members of the family who are present here, and they can stand up if their name is called, if they remember their name. My Barbara, I should say Barbara, Barbara's dad was mayor of the City of Renton, Gerard Baxter, between 1950 and 1960. Unfortunately, he died at age 57 at a heart attack. He was a good mayor and a very good and honest person. Then, next, I want to introduce Don Lynn, my stepdaughter. She couldn't wear her prime dress that she had, but she just came from work. She is a certified medical assistant at the Virginia Mason Clinic in Issaquah, and she came right here. My granddaughter, Cassie, stand up. She's a photographer in the family, and she takes some pictures. Gerard Baxter, as I say, died at age 57. He was survived by his spouse, Sarah M. Baxter. Sarah died at age 102 and a half.
Whoa.
When she reached 100. We had a party for her at the retirement home down on Rhea Avenue, Lake Shore Retirement Home, which had been number of years. Over 100 people showed up. And always remember, the mayor also showed up with a proclamation making it Sarah M. Baxter Day. And I can tell you quite frankly, this was one of the greatest moments of her life that she well remembered, being so recognized. In the interest of complete openness and transparency, I should also say, at the time the mayor showed up to present her, I think it was close to an election year, and he picked up quite a few of the senior citizens who were present. You did a good job, Dennis, and I appreciate it. This is a special day for me, and I hope you don't mind if I inject some personal notes. On this very day, 70 years ago to the day, July 14, 1944, I was in the military, I was in the Army Counterintelligence Corps in a small community south of Paris. At that time, July 14, 1944, the Germans were still occupying Paris. Some one in this little town, and the name I've forgotten, told me was Bastille Day. Bastille Day in French is, in France, is a national holiday that occurred in 1789. None of us were present there, of course, when they liberated some prisoners, four, seven prisoners at the Bastille, and which started the French Revolution, which was entirely quite bloody in 1789, certainly less peaceful than ours. It was only two and a half weeks after this encounter I had in this little village that we marched into Paris, when it was liberated on August 25, 1944, by our troops, American troops, and the French troops. Whenever you spend 27 years in one job as attorney for a city, you will undoubtedly remember certain cases that stick in your mind and probably will remain there for the rest of my life. I'm going to mention them briefly. This happened about, little over 50 years ago. None of you were born yet. That's almost two generations ago. One of the largest companies in the world, Shell Oil Company, filed a petition with the city and the planning commission to construct and maintain a tank farm in the valley down the street here. The city rightly rejected that petition for the simple reason that it would be detrimental to the growth of our city. It would have problems with gas emission, noxious gases, et cetera. Anyhow, we denied the petition. Shell Oil Company sued us, and I defended in the Superior Court in King County. It was a tough battle because they had unlimited resources and we didn't. Let me interrupt this for a minute, talking about resources. I called the mayor this morning to verify that he's not pulling the fast one on me, that we have a assembly at 7:00. And you know what happened? First time in my experience in 64 years of practice in law, having called many mayors in different cities during my work, he answered the phone himself.[710.13][710.13](laughter) No secretary, no assistant. This is unheard of.[716.01][716.01](laughter) Pennywise, et cetera, et cetera. No wonder you can balance a budget so easily. Anyhow, we went to court, and it was a battle because Shell had unlimited resources, ours were limited, I had to defend it. I hired, and probably the only good move I made, a professor at the University of Washington, who is an expert on gases and different things. He was very good. But also helped in this case is that I had asked the judge during the proceedings that I would appreciate if he would take a trip out to Renton. Some judges wouldn't know where Renton is located, but he knew, and he came to look at the acreage that Shell owned or wanted to develop. Anyhow, the judge, after a lengthy trial, held in our favor, supported the city, and denied the petition of Shell Oil Company, which in my opinion, if you go back the two generations, helped the city to develop the valley in a more beneficial economic and environmental standpoint than having a tank farm there, which would have been disastrous to our future. The judge made the decisions alone or with us, but he was a good judge, always recognized him for taking interest in coming out to look at the scene, which some judges won't The second incident in my experience over the 27 years, and I might tell you quite frankly, Dennis answered the phone.[833.23][833.23](laughter) The second incident that I remember as long as I live did not involve a lawsuit, but it was a most complex legal matter that I had encountered. I started working for the city in 1950. The salary at the time was $100 a month, which some people will say is too much, and some people will say it isn't enough, but as I understand, the city council, the mayor, the infinite wisdom over the last 64 years have adjusted the city attorney's salary somewhat. I'm very happy to see Larry Warren and Zeneta Fontes having such a good job, and so noteworthy, which doesn't happen in many cities, that our firm, your firm, have represented the city now for 60 years. So, we must have done something good. The second incident involved my experience when I first got here in 1950, 64 years ago. I was wondering why the city, which then had about 10,000 population, didn't have a park on the waterfront, and they were right there on Lake Washington. It happened, and this is again approximately 55 years ago, that the Boeing company needed space for the administration building on Park Avenue. The only piece of property available there was a lot which was designated Mother's Park and was donated to the city in perpetuity as a park. The grand tourists, the people granted it, I think were called Monahan, is my recollection. They had no children. The Boeing company, the railroad, Puget Power, and a bunch of other people, all got together with the city to see what we could do and maybe arrange a trade. I think I worked on this close to a year, in fact, trying to get help even from the legislature, because during our negotiations, somehow some heirs showed up of the Monahans, who didn't live there, they're distant heirs, and they were willing to sign a lease, but they wanted $10,000, which was a lot of money then to most of us. It's a lot of money now, but in present value, it's probably $100,000, $150,000, and they wanted the city to pay that money to buy off the heirs to get free title. And I pleaded poverty for the city, which I had no trouble doing, because they always told me they ran out of money, looking at what they paid the city attorney at the time as an example.[1052.23][1052.23](laughter) So anyhow, we negotiated back and forth, and I finally got the, the legislature turned me down. I went to Olympia to see whether they would help, they wouldn't. But finally, I think the Boeing company and the railroad joined together and dug up the $10,000 and paid it to the heirs. The end result is, we got 20 acres, the initial 20 acres of Jean Coolan Park. Later, we had to condemn additional property along the east side to make it what the park is today. The Boeing company built their building, and we got additional taxes from the building on Park Avenue. The city also inherited a part of the deal, some leases that we had in the southern part of the lake, to somebody for fishing out of purpose, and we collected some revenue from that, but for, not for a long time. The end result is, we won up with 20 acres of land free and clear. We traded a lot, we, Mother's Park, Boeing company built a large administration building, we got additional revenue, and we collected some rentals. And we got the land free and clear and didn't cost the city except for the exchange, a dime. Now, that was two generations ago, and most people probably don't remember. It took, I tried to check my records because I wouldn't trust my memory, but it took about nine months to put this deal together. Involved a lot of people, a lot of negotiations. But that was the second incident in my career that will stick in my memory indefinitely. Now, when I originally got the notice from the mayor, from Larry, that you're going to present a proclamation, my immediate thought was, and of course I was in error, they're trying to make amends for lack of payment years ago.[1204.83][1204.83](laughter) And then I remember with these two good attorneys sitting here, Zeneta, who incidentally was my bailiff when I was on the bench, and I won't put this in writing, Zeneta, but she was the best bailiff I've ever had, and loyal, et cetera. And of course, that was a long, long time ago, but I thought first, maybe they want to make amends, but then I recognized the sacking limitations would have run after 64 years.[1241.21][1241.21](laughter) There's no way in hell you can get money out of the city for that, and we didn't. It is a great, with a great feeling of gratitude to you folks that I stand before you, for the very simple reason, among others, that it was a great opportunity for a young attorney to come to Renton when it had a population of about 10,000, which is now close to 100,000, and start out afresh. Most of the attorneys of my class had probably more ambitions. They all wanted to be in a high-rise skyscraper in corner office, looking over the sound and all that. But people forget that lawyers like doctors should learn to practice their profession in smaller communities, because in the long run, I think it is more appreciated, and it's a great opportunity for a young professional to get started. So, I want to thank you as much as I can for the opportunity you gave me 64 years ago, to become your attorney and serve for 27 years. It's an experience very few people can enjoy, or have the opportunity to enjoy. So, I thank you. Wish you all the best of luck. God bless you.[1352.46][1352.46](applause)
Well, thank you, Judge, and I don't want you to think that nothing was accomplished with your visit tonight. You were able to get, for $100 a month, one of the finest parks in all of King County, Jean Coolan Park. So, we're going to set the bar up a little bit higher for our city attorney. Me would love to.[1392.15][1392.15](laughter) We'll see what we can do. What part would it be like, Mr. Mayor?
I forgot to mention, can you hear me all right? I forgot to mention, after the deal was sealed and we got ID'd for the 20 acres, Jean Coolan was a good friend of mine, walked down to the park, it was a rainy day, we walked over the 20 acres, and I never fully realized, he had the vision that it would be a regional park. I was too narrow. I was happy to get the 20 acres as a genesis of the project, and it was a genesis of the city's help, probably to develop one of the best additions a city can acquire, and it will be enjoyed not just by the City of Renton, basically a regional park, people come from all over.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Very few cities our size who have that kind of park and facility.
Yeah.
Benefit of our people.
You're absolutely right.
If it assesses an interest, it should be congratulated. The only other comment I want to make, I know, Dennis, my time is up, you're going to fire me.
I just got the timer going here.[1473.15][1473.15](laughter)
If you do, all I can say is, just add it as a credit to the non-payment.[1479.21][1479.21](laughter) It is also amazing to me when I see the difference between the city council, the surroundings in 1950 and now. I looked at some, I still get the minutes from the council, council minutes. We had meetings that lasted until 12 or 1:00. I would get home so late, my wife wouldn't believe it, I was at a council meeting. I'm explaining to do it. But we had fights over one-way streets, leaky in the alley up in the Renton Highlands, which You changed it. I see your minutes, and I'm amazed. You begin your meeting at 7:00, and sometimes I see you adjourned at 7:47. How can you do all that in less than an hour? You should be congratulated. It's a pleasure for me and my family to be here.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Judge, and it's great to have your family here and your friends that came to honor you too. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Covington, let's see you follow the administrative report.
I won't even try. I would say, just to add to what Sheldon said, I think we, the last time we counted, I think we estimate over a million people a year visit Coolan Park, so it is a tremendous legacy that you participated in. Glad you have a few items, council and Mr. Mayor, that I want to report on. Council received a report of this, I'll try to summarize a little bit. Want to announce again, two picnics again this week. The first Wednesday, the 16th will be the Liberty Ridge Homeowners Association, that'll be located at Northeast First Street. They'll be hosting a fundraiser for school supplies for communities and schools. The second picnic will be the Lacrosse Homeowners Association. They'll have their picnic Thursday at the common area located at the corner of 35th and Monterey Court. The association will hold a community raffle to raise money for CISR as well. The Renton Hill Neighborhood Association will have their annual picnic July 23rd, that's next week, at Phillip Arnold Park, located at 720 Jones Avenue South. And just FYI, early in the year, they funded an Easter egg hunt to bring Renton Hill residents and their families together. So, as always with all these picnics, residents are encouraged to bring their favorite potluck dish and attend picnic to get to know their neighbors and city representatives who will be there. Wanted to remind everybody that the demolition removal of the Riverview Park Bridge will commence the week of July 21st and continue until mid-September of this year. The bridge, which was built in the '60s with pilings in the center of the Cedar River, has been rated in poor condition since a structural assessment a couple of years ago. The parking lot along Maple Valley Highway will be closed to the public for this period. Access to Riverview Park will be from the Cedar River Trail via Maplewood Roadside Park to the east or to the Narco property to the west. A new single-span bridge will be installed next summer, opening in September of 2015. The restroom at Riverview Park will be closed during this period with an accessible porta-potty placed on the trail nearby. And just to focus this information, we received a grant for this work from the legislature. We really appreciate that gesture for the citizens of Renton. Also, this, in a couple of weeks, July 28th, be right after River Days, their Cedar River Gabion Repair will begin at the Lower Cedar River Trail between Bronson Way and Logan Avenue. That's to repair those rock-filled gabions, the metal mesh cubes you see on the river. They were damaged in the January 2009 flood. We've secured approval and funding from FEMA for that work. It'll be, the trail will be closed from July 28th until mid-September. Visitors will be able to walk along North Riverside Drive and the Upper Cedar River Trail portion just east of the Activity Center. And as council knows, you've been briefed on several occasions on the services we're participating in with other community service organizations, with faith groups, and individuals to assist the homeless population with housing, clothing, and meals. Recently, the council heard comments and concerns regarding alleged illegal activities along the Cedar River Trail and inappropriate activity, some of which was, is attributable to some homeless individuals. So, I wanted just to let folks know, the following is an update on various actions the city has taken to address the inappropriate activity. We realize that with the combination of annual warmer weather, Cedar River Library construction impacts to Liberty Park, and the relocation of the Homeless Meal Coalition to Salvation Army Kitchen on Williams, it's possible there may be increased homeless activity along the Cedar River, and some of that activity is inappropriate and illegal. So, here are the steps we've taken to date during the past year with additional actions recently implemented. The park and trail lighting from Bronson to Senior Center's been cleared of obstructions to allow better lighting along the trail. Trail lights, including underbridge lighting, are programmed to come on before sunset and remain on until 11:00. remain on until 11:00 PM. We're not able to leave the lights on all night due to the impacts on salmon in the river and the negative impact to adjacent neighborhoods. Signage placed along the trail indicating trail hours of operation encouraging calls to 911 to support, to report, excuse me, any suspicious activity. We continue to update and replace these signs as needed to ensure the best visibility. We also regularly have police bike patrols and other patrols in the area. And in addition, our parks crews patrol from 6:00 AM until approximately 3:30 PM and in the afternoon when they then need to go out and do other work to prepare fields and other things. But we do have regular patrols in there from 6:00 AM until the park closes between the police and our parks folks. Again, because of the summer activity and the warmer weather and some of the other events I mentioned earlier, we'll be reviewing our ordinance on homeless enforcement for Arlington, Washington, to determine if there are any elements from their plan that could be incorporated here. Community services will investigate placing barriers on benches to discourage the use of benches as beds. Community services will work with the police department to install cameras that will show potentially illegal actions. And police will place additional emphasis on the Cedar River through bike and other patrols, as I mentioned above. Community services will coordinate with Renton Ecumenical Area Association of Churches regarding their efforts and outreach to encourage sheltering with homeless individuals and to explore ways in which they may assist us in discouraging inappropriate activity by certain homeless individuals. And finally, we'll, we're going to look into whether or not different types of irrigation systems could be implemented that would be programmed to go on sporadically during the hours the trails closed to deter unwanted activity. So I want to let you know, it's always a balance. As the council knows, again, we have homeless population in this community and by far, the majority of those folks are people who are trying to live their lives just like we are. And we want to try to provide those folks with shelter and clothing and meals so they can have a quality of life. But whether there are individuals, homeless or not, who are conducting inappropriate and illegal activity, we want to be made aware of that and take care of that. So we want to encourage folks, if they see any inappropriate activity along the trail or anywhere else in the community, please call us. Call 911. We will then get out there and investigate as soon as we can. And where we see suspicious or illegal activity, we will address that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I'd just like to comment if Judge Sheldon, and then would like to leave early. After 27 years of meetings, he most likely doesn't need to hear anymore.
Very much. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next is audience comment. We have several people that have signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. And you have five minutes to address the council. We have a timer next to the city clerk with a light on it. When it gets to yellow, you've only got a few seconds left in the five minutes. So first is Carl Norton.
Hi, my name's Carl Martin, N-R-T-O-N. They wanted me to speak about the meals in town. Well, I'll tell you that food stamps are, the mission statement for food stamps are supplemental. So people that are on food stamps, that's a supplemental. They don't always have the rest of the income for what they need. Salvation Army has always been there, but they're just one church. And they have limited resources. They do what they can. Our president has asked the private sector and the churches to step up and help in these times. The Renton churches, all of them, of all denominations, have really come up and they've provided not just meals, but a safe environment for these meals, which is very important. The troublemakers, I've been out here a while, I know most of the people, and there are very few. And I know the Renton Police Department is very sufficient. There's no reason why they can't address the troublemakers and leave alone, like you say, the people that are just trying to exist and maybe get back on their feet. The churches and Salvation Army and the cold weather shelter from the city have all been very helpful. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you. And I want to emphasize something, just to tail end of Jay's comments earlier. We recognize that a lot of the problems that we have with either drug activity or other illegal activity on the trail is not necessarily homeless people, but people that are looking for a place to cause problems. So we don't want anyone to have the sense that all the problems that we're experiencing has to do with homelessness. That's clearly not the message. So, thank you. Next is Greg Latin.
My name is Greg Latin, and I've been homeless for a couple of years now. I'd like to thank the churches and Salvation Army for providing meals. And I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Next is Fortress Smith.
Hello, my name is Fortress Smith, S-M-I-T-H. Wish to thank all you guys, fire department, police department, churches, for helping the homeless. Really appreciate it. Have a great day and God bless.
Thank you for coming here. Appreciate it. Next is Howard McComber.
Howard McComber, I live in this Renton Highlands. I want to, first of all, apologize. I've got a brand-new phone, so I'll have to shut it off. And you know, I'd be most embarrassed moment in the world would be with the judges up here getting his award. So my apologies to all of you. We have here, first of all, I want to thank these men for coming here tonight. That's very hard, in their position, to come here and to speak in front of television cameras and the city government. You guys are awesome, and they know it. But they wanted to show their appreciation for what you guys are doing to help the people in our town. Now, if I push the right button, which shade tried, I mean. Did I blow it?
Yeah.
What do I need to do?
Push it again.
The green button?
Yep. Push it one more time.
Okay.
There you go.
Oh, there it is? Okay, we got it. Okay, first of all, I want to thank you personally for your tremendous support. I know that there are people on the dais who, with their friends and associates, provide most of the food that we serve, early in the morning and at 5:30 and other places where the people need, they need a meal. What we do in these meals is not only serve a meal, but these are our guests. So when we get through serving, we take a plate and we sit down and we enjoy each other's company. It's very important. Most important thing are the people involved. And as we work at trying to make this a happier, kinder, better place to live, we can succeed as we show compassion and love. And that's 99% of it. I happen to know that there are people in this room who have always paid at least 10% of their income to charity and countless hours. And I appreciate the service, just all the service adding together. Everybody working together, everybody being inclusive, has a tremendous positive effect in Renton. The judge had a great deal to do with Coulon Park, and I think that that's fabulous and should not be in any way, felt anything, but it was just super. But I think that making everybody in Renton feel important and given a better life and a reach out to these people, everybody, that is our chance to give a legacy so that later out some of you who live very long get to stand up here and say, I remember when somebody didn't feel real welcome in Renton and that's no longer true. And I think that's so important. We all have to work together on that. We all have causes. I have mine. And this is one of them right here. This is our, this is a save the date moment here. On Thursday, October the 2nd, we're going to have a gala event. It's going to be an auction. It'll be a silent auction as well as a live auction. Everybody's invited to come. We are asking for donations. And that'll be up to you. When you come to one of these things, you're helping to support some wonderful people doing wonderful things. And it takes, it takes money to do this, just like I'm sitting on the mayor's board of Budget, the Budget Advisory Group. And we're trying our best to have success. And that's the most important thing we can do is how we give and what we do and the way we act and the people we include. So what we have now is an opportunity for those who'd like to come on October the 2nd, at Thursday, to have some fun and to participate, participate in helping to fund our organization. It'll be at 233 Burnett Avenue South in Renton, at the Renton Pavilion. And we'll have this information added. I'm sure we can spread it around. But just wanted you to save the date of October the 2nd as an opportunity. I think that the most important thing we're all doing, we all are working to get Renton the way we think it's going to be best. We all have our hopes and dreams, and they don't all coincide. As Greg told me the other, the other day when we were meeting, sometimes there's a positive friction that goes on because we have our, our things that we really care about deeply. And sometimes, well, we just do it, we care tremendously. And I know everyone up there has something special. And everyone up there is trying to make Renton a better place to live. And we can all join with Reach because Reach is doing wonderful things for people. We are trying our best to reach out to those who don't have and give them an opportunity to have dignity and success and to be able to be contributing members of our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Howard, I just want to thank you for taking the time to help some of our folks at home see the face of some of the people bringing Carl Fortress and Greg here tonight. And I want to thank you guys for having the courage to come up here and to, and to speak, speak about, you know, your, your situation. So the people at home can know that and can understand, you know, how they can support and help change the lives of people that have, you know, are going through some struggles right now. And so Howard, I thank you for being a leader in the community that knows how to go into places where many people can't go, don't know how to, and connect with people in a very natural and authentic way and encourage them to come before us, to help us to, to hear the story and to become inspired on how to do more. Thank you, Howard.
Good evening, honorable members of the Renton City Council. My name is K.A. Randolph, R-A-N-D-O-L-F, as in Frank. I'm a member of the Committee to Free Nostora Solgado. She is a, one of your citizens or one of your residents of the city of Renton. She's a citizen of the United States. She's a 42-year-old mother of three, grandmother of four. And she's now being confined in a maximum-security prison in the state of Nayarit, Mexico, which, for those of you that may not know, is one of the most infamous and dangerous prisons in the entire country of Mexico. She's been detained down there since August 21st, 2013. Since the time that she's been detained, she's, she's lost 30 pounds. She's helped, she's being held in conditions that I think can be described as violating basic human rights. And just to make, emphasize that point, she was visited in the last few months by six Mexican senators. That's senators from the, from the federal government of Mexico in that prison. And those senators described her circumstances and her conditions like, basically like this. And they, they stated that she was a political prisoner, and I'm quoting them now, "As she's a political prisoner, receiving harsh treatment under inhumane conditions amounting to psychological torture." And they demanded an investigation by both the United States government and by the Mexican government, neither one of which has, you know, satisfied that request as, as I speak now. Now, it's natural to ask, you know, why, why would a resident or how does a resident of the city of Renton and a US citizen end up, you know, in the heart of Mexico? That's obviously a very big question. And just to give a brief explanation, you'll hear from one of her family members, her daughter, in just a moment, to maybe explain more about this. But let me just say this, beginning in, in the year 2000, after she had already developed a pretty comfortable life here, right here in this area, first in Bellevue, then in Renton, raised a family of three kids, worked very hard, you know, three, three jobs, and then became a naturalized citizen of the United States. She did it, you know, what most of us would consider the right way. Anyway, after she established a pretty decent life for herself here, she began to visit, you know, her, the people of her birthplace in the city of, of, Nayarit, excuse me, and it's the state of Nayarit. Anyway, to bring back to the people of her birthplace, you know, toys, food, clothing, and things of that sort. Beginning in 2008, after she had made a number of visits there, you know, over a number of years, that area where she lives in, excuse me, it's a small city actually called Olinala, it's in the state of Guerrero. Correct myself. Anyway, she, they developed a very big problem with drug crimes, with murders, with kidnappings and things of that sort. And she belongs to a community in that town that consists of people that are, that are classified as indigenous people. And those people might be the most closely associated with here in the United States as Native Americans. And under the Mexican and the state constitution of Guerrero, indigenous people have a number of rights, including the right of self-defense and the right to form their own police force, which they did in 2012. Because the local police force and the municipal governments were, you know, very much corrupted by drug cartels and various other organized crime syndicates. The people of the town, Olinala, elected her to be the organizer and the coordinator of this police force, which consisted of 170 members. And shortly after the time that she was elected as coordinator by them, they made an arrest of a local official. And he was being charged for interfering with a crime scene that involved a double murder and drug trafficking. And this created a conflict between this police force, this community police force, and the corrupt local and municipal officials around there. And she found herself within a few weeks of that arrest, or a few days of that arrest, rather, being arrested by herself. Her and a few of the other members of the community police force were arrested by the Mexican military. And this was on August 21st, 2013. And so she's been held at this maximum-security prison ever since, without having, for most of that time until just a week ago, without having had the ability to see a lawyer, without having basic, you know, access to, to good food and nutrition. She's lost 30 pounds since she's been in confinement over the last 10 months.
Excuse me, Mr. Randolph, your five minutes is up. Did you want to allow Ms. Rodriguez to complete this story? I see she's been talking the same subject.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we just give Mr. Randolph a couple more minutes to wrap his comment up and then move.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to give Mr. Randolph a couple more minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, let me just say, wrap it up real quickly, boy, time passes by fast. But let me just say quickly that recently on June 16th, I have a packet here for at least five of you because Mr. Taylor and Mr. Povonia already have the information. We had a chance to meet with them before this meeting here. But I have a packet. Can I give that to the city clerk?
Yes, sure, yeah.
Okay, that's for five of you. And that's a general background information about the case. But what our committee is here for is because obviously Ms. Solgado and her family members, you know, they're residents of the city of Renton, which is why we're here. We think that the city council needs to address this and, and speak to it in the form of a resolution. And what our committee, the Committee to Free Nostora Solgado in Seattle, would like, is we'd like you to pass a resolution. And in that packet, you'll already see that there are a couple of resolutions that have been passed by non-legislative bodies. Labor Council and the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee passed resolutions. And we'd like you to consider over the next week or two to, to take on a resolution of that, of that kind, basically calling for the Mexican government to, for her immediate release, acknowledging her as a resident of- her as a resident of Renton and a U.S. citizen, acknowledging her status, if you can, as a political prisoner, as some members of our government did, and some members of the Mexican government have, and requesting, in particular, that the Washington Congressional delegation, you know, be active in seeking Nostora's release, and also urging King County Council to pass a similar resolution. That's what we'd like you to consider in a resolution to support that case, so.
All right, thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Griselle Rodriguez. I'm a resident of Renton Rodriguez, R-O-D-R-I-G-U-E-Z. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be here and speak in front of you, and I would just like to, I would like to, I'm sorry. What we're seeking is, you know, to spread the story out the most we can. We believe that all pressure, social pressure, political pressure, anything can help bring my mom back. She is being held under horrible conditions. She, until about, she has not yet seen her attorney, until about two weeks ago, they granted her attorney the right to see her, and he hasn't been able to see her yet. She suffers from severe neuropathy. They've denied her medication. She has, she's been served raw food, she's been served food with rocks in it, one which broke her molar. She's been denied clean water. She's been denied the most basic things that a human eats. She's been denied any social contact. She's been held in isolation for the past 11 months. Like Mr. Randolph said, she's lost 30 pounds in the past 11 months. And all we're asking for is for help. For help to bring her home. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Randolph contacted Armando and myself. I presumed that other council members had been contacted, but learned that they had not, and so we met with the family and requested that packets be distributed to the other council members so they can read, get more background information on the story. Mr. Randolph and Griselle indicated that the reason that they're approaching here at the city of Renton is obviously because this is the home of Nostora Solgado. And they also have been successful in getting the support of Congressman Adam Smith. He signed on also as a supporter. And so I would like for our council members to review, you know, this packet over the holiday weeks that we're going to be off, come back at the next council meeting, and I would, I'd be making a motion that we adopt a resolution with similar language as some of the other resolutions in support of the release of Ms. Nostora Solgado.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next is Diane Dobson.
Evening, Diane Dobson. Last name spelled D-O-B-S-O-N, Dobson, in Renton, downtown Renton, Washington. Exact address is on your form. Came to council last Monday, beginning Thursday and through the weekend, there was a very strong police presence along the city of Renton Cedar River Trail. And for that, I thank you to begin with. Most of the officers that were instructed to do foot patrol on the trail do. Tonight, before coming up, Renton Police Officer drove slowly along the Riverside Drive, overlooked the five homeless individuals sleeping on the benches. I say homeless. I'm going to make a strong differentiation right now between homeless and vagrants, and there's a big difference. The problem is, the homeless are interacting with the vagrants, and the line becomes less defined. And while I appreciate, truly, truly appreciate, I volunteer, I give time, energies, money as well, I do want a peaceful way of life and enjoyment. Tonight, I had to go to the Salvation Army and ask them, please ask your patrons to stop throwing their garbage in our yard. If they recognized it, they'll do it. I don't want to have to be the face going out there. We've continued to do digging between neighbors, facts, et cetera. I've attempted to relay the information together with a very clear message to your neighborhood resource officer of, "I am scared." And I'd like to give the neighborhood resource officer details so that they can consolidate them with other neighborhoods and neighborhood watch programs. The message I received back was, "Your email was forwarded to the chief. I haven't heard from an officer since Friday." In my email, I told them I'm scared. But it appears communication may be one of the biggest problems within the city, at least as far as this goes. I don't want to assume with the rest of the city, and I'm not here about that. I've spoken to multiple Parks Department employees over the weekend who have relayed criminal information to the police department, yet the police department seems surprised to find out there's prostitution in Renton. Yeah, prostitution in Renton. The city's handoff approach to the homeless issues has allowed a group of vagrants to move into your city. They're bringing crime, drugs, women, to those that are looking. They have patterns of behavior that I've tried to explain to the police department for the last two years, but I'm now told those details don't always get relayed. I met with city officials and the chief in 2013, was assured action would happen, it never did. We were advised the signage that J. Covington has referenced tonight was never put up and installed before because the department didn't relay the information to the employees. For two years, I've insisted to the Parks Department that the lights are not on the trail 24/7. At Prince, she sat in a meeting with me where we were assured by the community, I apologize, I don't know the department, we were assured by that department that the lights were on for 24 hours. Yet every police officer I've spoken with, every Parks Department employee, knows those lights aren't on. We're told tonight by Mr. Covington, those lights can't be on for 24, over 24 hours because of the detriment it causes to the salmon. I appreciate the natural spawning habitat, and I'd probably be more sympathetic to the fish if the last two years the city didn't blow me off saying that the lights were on. The communication breakdown to me as a citizen is unnerving. To sit with a city official and be told that the lights were on, to have a city official told the wrong information, that's disconcerting that that's going on within your departments. Speaking with the Parks Department, they seem as frustrated as I do. They've indicated they've reported to the police department problems with drinking, violence between the pimps and the prostitutes, and the prostitution going on, yet the police don't know about this. The individuals that I'm speaking of have claimed their territory. Last year, it was so brazen, I had to call the police because they set up chairs on the corner, because they didn't want to walk up and down the stairs, assumably, they didn't want to walk up and down the stairs to deliver their drugs to the people that drive over and whistle. I've relayed patterns of behavior to your police department, and they're not interested in getting more details. Within the last two months, we had an individual that was climbing through a window of an apartment building, but the citizens had to stand there and wait and insist that the police do something. This individual was shot and a known drug dealer in the area. There's more problems going on in your city that you council members aren't aware of, and I appreciate the fact that you have a distance between yourself and what's going on. But your police department and your Parks Department and your city departments need to have better communication. And I'm coming to you, telling you I'm scared, and I hope there's not a breakdown of communication that results in any more citizens having to put their necks on the line and step out into the radar of these people before the police department does something. Thank you.
Next is Consent Agenda. We have eight items for the council to consider. Are there any items that council members would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Would you like to remove items D, E, and F?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move the Consent Agenda be approved minus items D, E, and F.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the Consent Agenda minus items D, E, and F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, these three items both ask for a waiver for fees that we typically give to them every year. One is for the Cast for Kids Fishing Event, one is for the 2014 Take a Warrior Fishing, and the third is a fee for the Activity Room for the Renton Advocates Center's fundraising event. And rather than putting these off and seeing them at Finance Committee, I just recommend that we go ahead and approve them at this point, and they can get on with their fundraising and events.
Second. Good idea. It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Corman. The council approve items D, E, and F. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is unfinished business, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee has a couple of committee reports. Finance Committee Report, Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves her payment on July 14th, 2014, Claim Vouchers 330-285 through 330-610, One Wire Transfer and One Payroll Run with Benefit Withholding Payments, And payroll vouchers include 725 direct deposits and 83 payroll checks totaling $1,593,928.80. This is signed by the three committee members. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Move that council concur with this committee report?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Ms. Palmer. The council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report, Riverview Bridge, Riverview Park Bridge Demolition Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award the construction contract for the Riverview Park Bridge demolition project, as solicited through the Small Public Works Foster Process, to Imperial Demolition and Earthworks in the amount of $192,030.15. The Committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the contract. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
This is a project that we've been looking at for some time, and at one point, it was one combined project, and now it's been broken into a couple just to make fish windows and some of those important things and contracts go. So this is the first portion where they're going to actually demolish the bridge. And as Mr. Covington said in his announcements earlier about timing and signage and Santa Canes and all of that, so everything will be well-posted and people will be aware that, at least for the next year or so, this bridge will be gone, and there are other ways that they can get to that part should they need to. So with that, I'd like to ask council to approve the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Ms. Palmer. The council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution, and we have one ordinance for second and final reading.
The resolution concerns the city deferred comp plan. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, ratifying and confirming, one, the city's request for proposal process and retention of a 457B plan consultant; two, termination of the Hartford and ICMA Retirement Corporation as the city's 457B record keepers and plan asset custodians; three, selection of a Tia Craft as the city's 457B plan record keeper and plan asset custodian; four, the execution of the 457B contracts by Nancy A. Carlson, Human Resources Risk Management Administrator; five, transfer of the city's 457B plan assets to Tia Craft; six, all actions taken and all contracts executed by city employees in this process; and seven, authorizing annual reports by the plan's investment committee for further review and ratification each year by the city.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council adopt this resolution as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The ordinance regarding the annexation is for second and final reading. And ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, annexing property consisting of approximately 17.1 acres, of which the north and a portion of the east boundaries are co-terminous with existing city limits. And the area is bordered to the south by parcel lines located near southeast 146th Place, by 161st Avenue southeast, and parcel lines to the east, parcel lines in proximity to southeast 142nd Place to the north, and by 160th Avenue southeast to the west. This annexation to be approved is the Alpine Nursery Annexation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Breyer. That this ordinance be adopted as read requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer? Excuse me.
Oh.
Ms. Breyer?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Pavoni. Before we move on to new business, I'm sorry, you know, I should have mentioned something while during the audience comment when Diane Dobson was making comments about staff, because this is the second week in a row that she's discussed about interactions with staff members. The first week was with a police officer in regards to an officer, his answer to her frustrations was, "You ought to move if you can't live with us." And I just wanted to let you know that we're taking those types of things very seriously. It's the same thing with her comments today, the Park Department is saying that they're reporting criminal activity to the police. We're actively checking with employees to try to verify comments being made that may be truthful, maybe not, but we want to know. We certainly, the Park Department and Police Department are working very close together with all of the issues throughout the city, not just on two blocks of the Cedar River. In regards to the police officer who may have made a comment to Ms. Dobson some time ago, we had the Police Department follow-up with her on that, and we're told that that was a comment that was 12 to 18 months ago, so she has no idea exactly when that occurred, who the officer may have been. We're following up with the most recent comments in regards to park employees, and so far, their interpretation, which they have reported to their staff, is a little bit different than we're hearing. So the most important thing is, we know there's some issues. We have probably more people out on the trails now because of the warm weather. We do a balancing act between people having the right to use a public trail, and then those that are intimidating and creating criminal activities. And we are going to address the criminal activities as aggressively as we can without violating the constitutional rights of people to be in public spaces. So the most important thing I want you to know is, we are communicating very strongly and on a regular basis, interdepartmentally, on all of these issues to solve the problems, and we'll keep you apprised of any information that we have as these things progress. And please, don't hesitate to call if you have any questions about that. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, next Monday is July 21st, and it's a council holiday, so there'll be no council meeting. July 28th, the following Monday, is also a council holiday after River Days, and there will be no council. The next meeting will be August 4th, Monday, and at 5:30 PM, the committee as a whole will meet in the council chambers, and the first topic on the list is McComber Request. And number two is emerging issues in Community and Economic Development Department. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Development Committee scheduled for July 24th has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Breyer?
I have no committees to announce.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, the Utility Committee scheduled for August 4th is canceled.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee scheduled for, or would be scheduled for August the 4th is also going to be canceled as well, and that is- 4th is also going to be canceled as well, and that is August 4th.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Continuing that pattern, the August 4th Public Safety Committee meeting is also being canceled.
Okay, and last but certainly not least, Ms. Palmer?
Here we go. The Transportation Committee, normally scheduled for this Thursday, July 24th at 4:00 PM, has been canceled. And then, just one other item. Mr. Covington mentioned two picnics coming up, and we also have the La Crosse Neighborhood Picnic coming up this Thursday.
I missed it.
Oh, did you? Okay, I missed that one. Thank you.
Okay.
See you there at all three.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Was there anybody who wanted to address the council who didn't have an opportunity? Any staff member wants to get up?
Mr. Mayor, we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.